Welcome to the July 27th meeting of the Portland Water District's Board of Trustees. My name is Louise Douglas. I serve as the President of the Board with Bill Lunt serving as our Vice President. Our format is relatively informal. There are two opportunities for public comment on issues not on this evening's agenda. There is a public comment period early in the meeting and another at the end of the meeting. The public is also invited to speak on each specific agenda item. In addition to the 11 members of the Board of Trustees, we're joined this evening by our General Manager, Ms. Carrie Lewis, our Clerk Donna Katsifakis, our Treasurer David Kane, and several staff members in the audience. We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Trustee Lunt?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you. Okay, Donna?
I will do the roll call. Joseph Saviski representing Cape Elizabeth and South Portland. Louise Douglas representing Wyndham and Raymond.
Here.
Robert Burns representing Gorham.
President.
Guy Cody representing Westbrook. Matthew Beck representing Cape Elizabeth and South Portland.
Matthew Beck representing Cape Elizabeth and South Portland. I see him.
Here.
Okay. Gary Libby representing Portland.
Here.
William Lunt representing Cumberland and Falmouth.
President.
Seth Garrison representing Scarborough.
Here.
James Willie representing Portland.
Here.
Kenneth Lovinski representing Portland.
Here.
And Kim Rich representing Portland.
Thank you, Donna. And now I will ask for a motion to accept the minutes.
Hold on, please. Nope. If you don't mind, we need to have a motion to have this meeting remotely.
Oh, thank you. Okay, yes. So could I have a motion to convene our meeting remotely?
So moved. By Trustee Cody.
Okay, in a second.
Trustee Lunt.
Thank you. So I have to take a roll call on this. So you're voting on having the meeting conducted remotely. Trustee Burns? Trustee Beck?
I can't hear him again.
All right. I'm back. Trustee Lovinski?
Yes, please. Yes.
Trustee Lunt?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
President Douglas?
Yes.
Trustee Cody?
Yes.
Trustee Libby?
Yeah.
Trustee Rich?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Saviski? And Trustee Willie?
Yes.
And one more time, Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now I will ask for a motion to accept the meetings of the regular meeting of June 22nd, 2020, and the workshop meeting of July 13th, 2020.
So moved by Trustee Cody.
Second, Trustee Beck.
Are there any changes to the minutes that anyone would like? Okay, seeing none, I will do the roll call. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Lovinski?
Yes.
Trustee Lunt?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
President Douglas?
Yes.
Trustee Cody?
Yes.
Trustee Libby?
Yeah.
Trustee Rich?
Yes.
Trustee Saviski and Trustee Willie. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and this is our first opportunity to invite the public for any comments. And if there were anyone from the public in attendance, they could speak on any item not on the agenda right now. I don't believe we have anyone from the public with us tonight. Okay, moving on. So now we're going to go over each of our reports. And first up, Operations Committee Report. Trustee Beck?
Thank you, Madam President. The Operations Committee met two weeks ago, Monday, July 13th, just past 5:30 PM. We met remotely, of course. Following items of business were considered. We heard from staff an update on the engineering services procurement for the North Wyndham Sewer Project preliminary design. Staff discussed the process of procuring preliminary design services for the North Wyndham Sewer Project. Because the project may be eligible for federal funding, it intends to follow the procurement requirements of the potential funding agency. These requirements dictate that the proposals be reviewed by the selection committee and then terms including costs be negotiated with the highest ranked respondent. This is in place of including a weighted cost score for each proposal in the selection matrix, a process that we're frequently familiar with. These requirements are currently permitted in the district purchasing policy. In addition to that, and that was the majority of the meeting, we also had a staff review on the process of dealing with customer water quality inquiries. The staff, Jim Wall, updated the committee on the volume of inquiries received in 2019 and discussed the efforts to address an issue with a customer in South Portland. It's important to note that the overwhelming majority of customer water quality inquiries are easily remedied and frequently handled by customer service representatives themselves. There was no other business discussed at the meeting in addition to yours truly, trustees Cody, Rich, and Lunt, along with the staff. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Beck. Next up is our Planning Committee Report. And Trustee Saviski is not with us this evening, so Trustee Willie, could you provide us with the committee report for planning?
Thank you, President Douglas. The meeting was held July 13th remotely with Trustee Saviski, Trustee Libby, and myself with staff from the Planning Committee for the Engineering. And Donna Katsifakis and Manager Lewis were in attendance, too. The first item was a potential solar farm development lease on Rocky Hill, Westbrook. Staff reviewed a proposal from CES Consultants to provide assistance to lease a portion of the Rocky Hill property and provide an update to the city of Westbrook's potential involvement in the project. Staff noted that the city of Westbrook expressed interest in participating but is currently pursuing their own RFP for developing solar on-city properties and would like to review their proposals before pursuing a partnership with the district on the Rocky Hill property. The committee suggested staff hold off-marketing the property for a solar farm until Westbrook completes their RFP process. The second item was a request to lease land on Northeast Road in Standish for a Veterans' Memorial Park from Kennison Hooper Post Veterans Group 128 of Standish. Staff discussed the request from the Legion group to lease district property at the corner of Northeast Road and Route 35 for Veterans' Memorial Park. After much discussion, the committee determined that this type of use was not compatible with the district's ownership of the property and instructed staff to notify them, the Veterans' Group, that the district is not interested in leasing the property. And then thirdly, I made this request for the committee to suggest staff provide an update on the district's compliance with the City of Portland's Energy Use Reporting Ordinance at the next committee meeting. We adjourned at 6:15, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jamie, I have a question. I guess, could you explain a little or maybe someone on staff could help us understand why the American Legion request isn't compatible? What is it specifically that doesn't fit?
Well, I'll take a first stab at it, and maybe Gary or Donna could jump in along with Carrie. But the uses right now that we have for use on the properties tend to dovetail with environmental, you know, getting outdoors. And it isn't purpose-driven by groups having, you know, having an appeal that's separate from quote-unquote "using the outdoors," like the YMCA camp, and the ability to hike on our trails. And so, the one concern that came up a little bit into the discussion, Donna brought it up, was to have a group like the Legion, you know, have a memorial is a great thing, but when we start entering into what other types of requests can come in, and it really strays from the original intent of setting aside that space to keep in a natural state for watershed protection in the lower bay. This would be a small footprint, granted, but it gets into where does it end? And is this an appropriate use? I have to say that my specific suggestion, too, was to work through the city, or not the city, the town, first on any proposal like this. I think anything that is going to happen there has to be vetted by the town regardless. But there could be more appropriate places in the town. But that said, Donna, maybe you can fill in if I... But the use to provide it to a group like the Veterans, very worthy, very good purpose, but where does it stop? And really, the intention of the land reserve and the surrounding area was to use it for quote-unquote "environmental purposes," getting outdoors, you know, leasing it to groups that are going to use the outdoors. And then the last thing I'll say is that the parking issue, I think, could have been a concern. You know, it's only two dates a year that you have Veterans' Event, so to speak, Veterans' Day and Memorial Day. Those are certainly two gathering points, but there could be other times, and it'd be a tough place to park. But that said, I might have gone too far with this. I think I touched upon, you know, a number of the issues, and I'm happy to let Donna fill in any blanks.
So this will be a quick answer. Trustee Willie is exactly correct. I mean, it does... The property we own tends to be used for recreational and natural purposes related to our mission, which is providing clean water. But as a legal issue, we are a public entity, and our property is public property. The danger we run is if we allow groups to use it for whatever their purposes are. If you allow the veterans to do it, if you have another group that may not be as palatable to the district for a variety of reasons. You could have homeless advocates, you could have Black Lives Matter, you could have any number, we could have political parties, you could have anything. If you allow one group to use it, you have to give the same type of access to everyone. So the concern was if we open it up to something other than what our mission is, then we would have to be in a situation of having to sift through these particular requests if we had more than one, and it would be difficult legally for us to say, yes, we like you, so you can use our property, and no, we don't like your message, so you can't. So the best way to handle it legally was to say it's not part of our mission, and that way, we don't ever have to address the message that any group is sending out that may want to use our property.
Thank you to both of you. That was really very helpful to understand. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, so we are now going to have our Administration and Finance Committee Report. Trustee Garrison?
Thank you. We held our meeting on Monday, July 13th at 5:30 PM, virtually, of course. I was there, as well as Trustee Burns, Lovinski, and Douglas. The first item we discussed was the wastewater bond authorization. Mr. Kane presented a motion for issuance of $960,000 in bonds to finance the Little John Pump Station. We'll be talking about that later in the agenda. The second item was the wastewater 2019 surplus balance. Mr. Kane presented a proposed motion transfer funds from the 2019 operating fund in exchange for in excess of the operating contingency fund target balance. We'll be covering that again later on. Suffice to say, where we would usually keep the money in the contingency fund, some of the communities elected to have that money come back to them. Portland and Westbrook's balances were refunded each to the city. The third item we talked about was the renewable energy project update. Mr. Kane provided an update on the CES Energy Renewable Project. And as you know, earlier this year, the board authorized entering into the contract with renewable energy providers to produce electricity. The authorized motion capped the payment to the REP to an average of nine cents. And as we know, one of the REP proposed a variable rate contract opposed to fixed rate. The variable rate would be a percent of the billing credit received by the district. The variable rate structure guaranteed the district would have positive financial results on those contracts. It was noted if the billing credits increase over the current levels, the average price of all the contracts may exceed nine cents. However, in light of that, it seems like the billing credit will increase in the foreseeable future. If it did, the district would see better financial results on the fixed contracts. Number four, update on engineering service procurement for the North Wyndham Sewer Project preliminary design. Mr. Kane noted staff is in the process of procuring preliminary design services for the North Wyndham Sewer Project. Because the project may be eligible for federal funding and intends to procure through requirements of the potential funding agency, these requirements dictate the proposal be reviewed by the selection committee and then terms including costs are negotiated with a high-ranked respondent, which is a little different than what our traditional process would be. This is in place of including a weighted cost score for each proposal in the selector matrix. And the requirements are currently permitted in the district purchasing policy, but again, different than perhaps how we would traditionally procure those. Finally, we talked about the employee satisfaction survey. Ms. Mers presented the results of the most recent survey. She noted the same basic questionnaire and process was used for this survey, and reviewed the feedback in the areas of loyalty and engagement, customer service, safety, employee development, culture, and payment benefits. And we had a number of questions about those. The meeting adjourned at 6:35 PM. Any questions?
Yes, so this is Jamie. Just a quick question. When would, and I realize it takes a little time with signing, you know, contracts and working on the signing contract in the building, these facilities, when would some of the revenues start coming through from this program? Is there just a general timeframe set to...
Yeah, I'd like to defer that to Mr. Kane or Ms. Lewis.
Yeah, I can help you out there because, of course, David already helped me out. So the one project that already is in existence is a hydro project, and we should be getting a small amount of reimbursement from them later this year, like in the $20,000 to $40,000 range. The solar projects have not been built yet, and the earliest anticipated payments would be very late next year. And of course, remember that the bulk of the electrical usage is on the wastewater side, so almost all of the reimbursements will be divided up among the wastewater funds, and really, there will only be a very small portion that will actually go to the water fund.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If everybody's all set, we'll move on to the General Manager's Report. General Manager Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President. I know you're all aware of the unfortunate consequence of the power interruption that occurred this past weekend at East End because you received a copy of the incident report. Excuse me, I'm just going to clear my... Okay, let's try it again. So as you know, there was a catastrophic failure of a splice in the CMP feeder line, which caused a complete power failure at the East End plant at 8:15 on Sunday morning. The standby generator at the plant started but did not produce any electricity. So there was no power at the plant for anything. There were no lights, computers, sump pumps, there was no aeration, and there was no disinfection. Because there was no disinfection, we promptly informed the city and main healthy beaches due to the public health concern with the East End beach being just around the corner over there. The beach was, in fact, closed. We put in place a process to get a rental standby generator on-site, which was a lesson learned from a prior power failure. And our friends at CMP worked diligently, and power was restored at 2:30 in the afternoon. So while we clearly take responsibility for this event, I have to tell you that it is hard to know what we could have done differently, what we could have reasonably done differently that would have prevented this from happening. The generator ran perfectly two weeks ago during a power failure. It's exercised regularly. It's maintained by a company with expertise. And like I said, it's hard to know just what we could have done differently that would have prevented it. But we will be doing a hot wash next week to review our response, see what lessons we will have learned from this one, and review our procedures. The generator has been repaired, and it will be tested under load yet this week to verify that it will work again when it needs to. Meanwhile, we're keeping the rental there just to be double-safe. And in fact, there was a power interruption on Sunday, yesterday Sunday, when the rental came online, provided power the entire time, and there was no loss of any essential treatment systems at the plant. So that said, you know, kudos to Scott Furman, who was on vacation down east and came back and dealt with this all the beginning of the weekend on Sunday to troubleshoot and help get things in order and start looking into what had happened. And he and his staff really admirably dealt with this and helped to make it last as short a period of time as possible. You remember the last time we had a significant power failure? It is a trick trying to get a generator on-site that is big enough to run what we need to run at that plant. But because Scott and his team had all of the, all those procedures in place, they were actually able to get it there before CMP even finished their work, and it would have been ready to run if we had needed it. So we will be getting back to you with any more information on that. Do you have any questions about that specific item before I move on to any others?
This is Trustee Garrison. Just a quick question. I know we're going to be, or CMP's going to be constructing a new substation, but is there any opportunity as part of that project or another project to add a second feed into the facility?
I'm going to try this one, and Chris or Scott, you can hop right in if I'm not covering it. This station, the substation, will be a dual-feed to the substation itself. So it is essentially two, from two separate substations getting to this one. So it is not another power line, but it really is redundant in itself, and we will yet have a standby generator on-site ourselves as well.
Okay, thank you.
This is, this is Trustee Lovinski. I wrote a letter to the editor a few days ago by a gentleman from Falmouth. Are you familiar with it, Carrie? Did you see it?
Yes, we did see it.
I mean, we certainly can address a lot of the points, you know. Are we going to answer it to balance the views expressed there with, you know, more facts than were given?
Yeah, that's a tricky one. We did release the incident report to the news media, and we were hoping that that would help tell the story by an independent third party rather than us having to do that. And yeah, I honestly don't have a good answer for that one. Can I, it's something that I should talk to Michelle some more about and see if it warrants a response. Often, it just stirs the pot up even worse when you go back to some like that, when they've had the opportunity to do the research and find out what the situation was independently.
And I noticed the newspaper article, you know, didn't mention, you know, that we're going to even strengthen further our protocols. I also noticed that it looked to me, at least, as if they quoted what Scott said in the report, but didn't look like they reached out to him for quotes other than what they took from the report. Is that right? Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, I believe that is correct, yes. But the good news, or the other news, is of course, that it really has been now very quiet since then about this particular topic. So let me talk to Michelle and see what she advises about the letter to the editor, and I'll let you know.
Yeah, or perhaps maybe just reach out to the reporter, not looking for news, but, you know, to say, you know, in the future, you know, we're a very reachable organization, you know, and, you know, we want your story to have as much information as possible.
Got it. Understood. Okay, yeah, that's good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all set on that. Anybody else? All right, then I will move on to our update on our finances. So what you have in your packet takes you to the end of June for consumption and the end of May for our financial results. So David has helped so that we can update you at these meetings with a little bit fresher information. So at the end of June, year-to-date, for the whole year-to-date, the overall water consumption was down 4.4% relative to what we had in our budget. But it was only down 0.3% compared to 2019. So we're kind of on track year-over-year. On the revenue side, again, year-to-date to the end of June, we're down 1.1% on the revenue versus budget. And of course, that number is not as bad as the consumption because we had a rate increase last year, and that's being factored into those numbers. And on the revenue side, we're up 3.6% compared to where we were in 2019. But the really good news is that in July, to date, so July is not quite over yet, but the consumption for July was up 29% over last July. And that gave us a net income that was, the commercial was down 1%, but all the others, where all the other customer classes were up, including residential, which was up 49% over last year. So that is really amazing, and that is the weather helping us out here, and obviously, people staying at home. On the net income side, where we are right now, we're showing a deficit of about $350,000, which is not unusual for this time of year. This, we make most of our money, as you know, in July, August, and September during the warm weather months. So the deficit of $350,000 right now is nothing to fret about yet. But we're also, so we're also just entering our big water use season, but we're also just entering our big spending season. So as we are right now, we're looking a bit better than we did in the spring, and that really is thanks to the efforts of staff to reduce spending and to the weather for helping us out. The wastewater fund income is also up, again, because we're not spending as much. So things are looking better right now than the bleak predictions we had in the spring. We will probably still have some amount of a deficit at the end of the year, but again, I'll keep updating you every month. And as we go into high water use and high spending, we will see how these things shake out. So that is the first part of the financial So that is the first part of the financial report. The second part of the financial report is that we did, oh, wait a minute, I had a picture for you guys. Let's see if I can do this. I'll try it just once. If it doesn't work, I'll, I'll give up immediately. Well, maybe not immediately, but close to immediately. All right, can you see this beginning slide here?
Yes.
So good, excellent. I was going to show you this at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the meeting, but I didn't. So we got our two bond ratings for two, a water and a wastewater bond that we put out. And they were unchanged from previous bond ratings. And I will just tell you, it's, I sat in on the call with David for the first time and I will say he is masterful at anticipating what these guys are going to ask and having every single detail laid out on the table around him for everything that they might ask and in his responses to the questions that they asked. So both organizations credited our sizable and save, sizable and stable surface service area, sorry, and our good debt coverage and our strong operational management practices and policies. Both of them, oh, and our reserves, and both of them complemented the strong management. And the things that David brought up to convince them of that were the extremely thorough budget document that we have, how we have a multi-year plan for our capital, that we have emergency response plans that cover various scenarios, how we worked with the city of Portland on integrated planning, how we review our water losses, your board's COVID nineteen financial review and preparation for those things. So really very favorable. David did a fantastic job and we got really good rates, as you can see, on these two bonds. So that is very good. The other part of our financial situation, which I probably should have talked about before the bonds, is the delinquencies continue to increase, just so you can have a picture that they've gone from about three hundred thousand dollars due more than sixty days to about three, a little over three seventy five in our present day. So we're on top of that. I will, we are, I will talk to you about that a little bit in my next section on COVID response. So before I go there though, since I've got the pictures up, we have pictures on buses. There are nine buses riding around in the Portland service area that are accolades for our tap water. The messaging got changed a little bit due to the pandemic, but the contract was in place before we started. You'll see more details about that in the environmental services part of our report. Now let's see if I can get back to stop sharing and get back to all of you. Okay, we back to what looks normal here? Say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate that. All right. So and a quick COVID update for you before, before I go. So we are complying with all the governor's orders. We've got a process in place now for testing employees. We have set up requirements for employees who are returning from travel. We updated face covering requirements to match the governor's latest greatest and, and things are, are going pretty smoothly. We've got good compliance throughout the employee base and I'm very grateful for that. We are reinstating the requirements now for cross connection control programs. So as you know, the cross connection control devices have to be inspected and when the pandemic started, we discontinued that because the customers didn't want any plumbers in their basements and plumbers didn't want to go into anybody's basements back then. So we've now started, we've started that, that backup now and we will make sure that businesses and whoever needs backflow and cross connection control will be compliant with our requirements. And we are planning now how to approach when the P U C might lift this disconnection moratorium. And we don't know when that's going to happen. They did send out an inquiry to utilities asking for feedback. When, would you like us to lift it? Would you not like us to lift it? Are there any special things that we could, that we could consider? And our planning is going to take into account, you know, President Douglas was able to help us a lot with her knowledge about collections and that was very helpful. So we're going to be looking at accounts with the biggest dollars that are owing first. And we're going to be working on how to set up payment plans because there will be a rash of requests for payment plans when we go through this. So it's very, very rough at the moment, but we are getting ready for, I think, what will be a deluge of customer interactions. And the last thing I wanted to mention on the COVID update front is we sent out a survey to employees who are currently working remotely to inquire about their personal level of concern with the pandemic. Their pros and cons of their working at home versus working at the office. Did they have a preference to work at home or work in the office? What would barriers be to their returning? What were their concerns? And we're consolidating all of those responses now. The hope was to find out if some employees really, really, really wanted to continue to work remotely and some really, really, really wanted to come back to the office, that we would be able to use that as a way to rebuild a return to the office approach and look at work spaces and how much population we might have in the building and how to deal with the physical plant at Douglas Street and at the other remote locations where people are. So fingers crossed, if exactly the right number of people want to continue working remotely and exactly the right number want to come back to the office, we'll be golden. And people will hopefully be able to sort of continue to work in the environment that, that they are most comfortable with. So those are coming in now fast and furious. And I will be delighted to update the board with what I learned from them as we, as we put all the results together and start noodling on them. So the one very last point that I have tonight is we are recording our meetings. Michelle and Carrie Walker have figured out how to post the recordings on our website at P W D dot org. And hopefully our next, next business meeting, we will also be live streaming the Webex broadcast. We're going to test it out between now and then. Cross your fingers, we'll all be, we'll all be streaming live at the same time too. That concludes my report. Are there any questions? Good, okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, Carrie, I just wanted to let the trustees know. I, I had a really good conversation with Carrie today about the lead and copper rule testing that's taking place. And this is an issue that was, you know, really put to bed years ago, but I'm sure if customers, if they hear about problems in other parts of the country, they may wonder about, you know, their water at the tap here. And, and you know, the fifty participants that are being tested, this is once every three years, they are all households. To come to find out, there aren't any renters or rental properties. But it's, it's by design that we use the same people or the same households every three years to track them. That's correct, Carrie, right?
Right, that is, yeah, that is correct. We don't know if they're rented, 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 or owned. We just know that they're single family homes. That's the requirement from the EPA.
Okay, well, and, and it could be a rented home, but you know, there's probably thirty thousand renters in Portland, you know, that are staying in duplexes, whatever, multiplexes. But, but, but the nice thing to, I was reminded of was that Carrie said anybody who wants to call and get their water tested for lead and copper, and I probably knew this, but I just would like to make a note in the minutes that that, you know, they're, they're able to do that. They can call, you know, get a water test done promptly by the district and satisfy that concern. So thank you for the conversation, Carrie, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you. So now we're going to move on to new business. And first, tonight we do have a public hearing regarding the issuance of sewer bonds. We need to open the public hearing and determine if there is anyone here to comment. And I don't believe there is. So I guess I'd like to make a motion. I guess I'm not sure what to do here, Donna. I'm sorry.
So that's all right. So if there's no one here for the public hearing, we'll move on to, you close the public hearing.
Okay, so we can now close the public hearing.
And then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution twenty dash zero one two, authorizing issuance of up to nine hundred thousand dollars of sewer bonds to finance the upgrades of the Little John Pump Station in Cape Elizabeth.
Thank you. This is trustee Garrison. Resolve the issuance of up to nine hundred thousand dollars of Cape Elizabeth sewer bonds is hereby authorized to finance the upgrade of the Little John Pump Station in Cape Elizabeth and other related infrastructure upgrades and improvements. The full form of the resolutions is attached here too and incorporated as part of the minutes of this meeting.
Second it.
Thank you. The proposed motion provides funding for projects that were included in the two thousand eighteen capital improvement plan. Two thousand eighteen thirteen sixty, family field Little John Pump Station, nine hundred thousand dollars. At the April sixth, two thousand twenty meeting, the board authorized a project budget of nine hundred thousand dollars. The bond is planned to be issued through the main municipal bond bank S R F program. It indicates the first full year's debt service payment would be fifty four thousand dollars. The financial impact was incorporated into Cape Elizabeth wastewater fund and assessment forecast provided to the municipality. Corporate council has reviewed the proposed resolution as to form. Staff recommends the motion to be approved. The committee recommended the motion be forwarded to the full board for its consideration. Attached is a full form of motion. Questions?
Okay, seeing none, I will call the roll. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Lovinsky?
Yes.
Trustee Lent?
I retired in oh nine and I was making seventeen dollars.
Trustee Garrison?
Hang on, we gotta figure out who it is.
Could you all make sure that you're muted unless you're speaking because we're getting some interference in the roll call? Great, thank you. So trustee Garrison, I believe you told me yes, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, President Douglas?
Yes.
Trustee Cody?
Yes.
Trustee Libby?
Yes.
Trustee Rich?
Yes.
Trustee Savisky is not here and trustee Willie?
Yes.
The next item is Order twenty dash zero two four. It's authorizing the transfer of the two thousand nineteen annual operating fund change for Gorham, Portland, and Westbrook wastewater funds.
This is trustee Garrison. Ordered that portion of the two thousand nineteen annual operating fund change in the Gorham Fund in excess of the operating contingency fund target balance is hereby transferred to its capital renewal and replacement fund. And we had further ordered that portion of the two thousand nineteen annual operating fund change in the Portland and Westbrook wastewater funds in excess of the operating contingency fund target balance is hereby refunded to each municipality.
This is trustee Willie, second.
Thank you. Due to the two thousand nineteen expenses being less than the budget, all wastewater funds except Cumberland and Wyndham had a positive annual operating net change. The Cape Elizabeth Fund had an annual net income, but the operating contingency balance is below the target balance and therefore recommend that the balance not be transferred. The Gorham, Portland, and Westbrook Funds had an annual net income and have operating contingency balance in excess of the target balance. Staff recommends the excess balances over the target balance be moved to the renewal and replacement fund and to partially finance the fund share of the High Antalucy Project and just thus reduce the need to finance those amounts. The committee at its June eighth, twenty twenty meeting requested staff to reach out to each of the municipalities and ask whether they preferred the district retain or refund the funds to them. Gorham requested the district retain the funds and Portland and Westbrook requested a refund. The Cumberland and Wyndham Funds had a net loss and no action is requested. Below is a summary of the operating funds as well as the renewal and replacement funds for the various wastewater entities. Corporate council reviewed the proposed motion and approved it as form. The committee reviewed at their June eighth meeting and asked staff to reach out to each of the municipalities to ask whether they preferred the district retain or refund the funds to them. The proposed motion reflects the request of municipalities. The committee recommended motion be forwarded to the full board for consideration. Attached is a letter from the city of Westbrook.
Does anyone have any questions for trustee Garrison? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Lovinsky? Trustee Lovinsky? Trustee Lovinsky? Okay, I'll come back to him. Trustee Lent?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
President Douglas?
Yes.
Trustee Cody?
Yes.
Trustee Libby?
Yes.
Trustee Rich?
Yes.
Trustee Savisky is not here. Trustee Willie?
Yes.
And trustee Lovinsky?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now at this point in our meeting, we are, we arrived to other business. And does anyone have any other business to bring up tonight? Okay, seeing none. And also at this point in the, in the evening, this is the second invitation for public comment. And if there were any member of the public that would like to make a comment, that would be now. And again, I don't believe we have any members from the public joining us tonight. And do any of our trustees have any comments at this time? Okay, seeing none. We would, we have an opportunity to go into an executive session at this time, but to my knowledge, there is no need for that tonight. So our meeting can be adjourned. And this concludes our meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.